Good evening and welcome to the City of Isani City Council Meeting for Tuesday, January 5th. Persistent to Minnesota Statute 13D .02, the public body has determined that the Isani City Council will not be able to hold the meeting in person due to the pandemic COVID-19. Persistent to Minnesota Statute 13D .021, the Isani City Council will be holding the City Council Meeting via telephone by using Zoom. I would like to call this meeting to order if we could all rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doing roll call, all members are present except for Councilman Burgley. I would assume that he's going to come in here late because he's always fashionably late. With that being said, do we want to do the oath or do we want to wait for that? Do it right away? Let's, let's get her going. City Councilmember Steve Lundin and Councilmember Jimmy Gordon. You want to do these both at the same time or one separately?
I'll do it with Steve first.
Okay.
Aye, Steve Lundin.
Aye, Steve Lundin.
Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution.
Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully.
And discharge faithfully.
The duties of council member to the city of Isani. To discharge faithfully.
Discharge faithfully the duties of a council member.
To the city of Isani.
To the city of Isani.
Minnesota.
Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Councilman Gordon up next.
Is there any?
Right hand.
All right.
Aye, Jimmy Gordon.
Aye, Jimmy Gordon.
Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution.
Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully.
And to discharge faithfully.
The duties of council member.
The duties of council member.
Of the city of Isani, Minnesota.
Of the city of Isani, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations to Councilman Lundin and Councilman Gordon on your reelections. Sign your life away, fellas. With that being said, is there any public comment at this time? If you would like to speak in public comment and you are via Zoom, you do have to press star six and state your name and address for the record. Nobody at this time. We'll move on to do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Make a motion to adopt.
I'll second it.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundin to adopt the agenda and a second by Councilman Gordon. Councilman Collison, you'll just have to state your name and say aye.
Dan Collison, aye.
Steve Lundin, aye.
Jimmy Gordon, aye.
And myself, aye. Therefore, it passes four zero. Approval of City Council minutes for December 28th, a special City Council meeting. December 15th, a regular meeting of City Council. December 15th, Committee of a Whole meeting and November 17th, a Planning Commission meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
I have a motion to approve by Councilman Lundin and a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, state your name and say aye.
Dan Collison, aye.
Steve Lundin, aye.
Jimmy Gordon, aye.
And myself, Jeff Johnson, aye. Therefore, it passes four zero. Announcement, City Office will be closed Monday, January 18th, an observation of Martin Luther King Day. A Committee of a Whole meeting will be Tuesday, January 19th, excuse me, at 5:00 PM. A goal-setting meeting will also be Tuesday, January 19th, at 5:30 PM. And a City Council meeting will be January 19th at 7:00 PM. Planning Commission will immediately follow that City Council meeting, also January 19th. Any council committee reports?
Just real quick, that Rum River BMX, they're started up practice as of last night. They're having pod, limited number of people. They're calling it pod practices. So they're getting back on the track and getting some exercise, so that's a good thing.
That's good to hear. Very good to hear. Thanks, Councilman Collison. Any other council committee reports? None at this time. Let's move on to business items. We have interview applicant for vacant Economic Development Authority seat. We just want to jump into those or we don't need to pass a resolution as of yet, right?
Correct, can you jump into it?
First up, do we want to do these separately? So do we want to mute? Mr. Ferris? Or nope, he can be present? Well, let's go with Mr. Ferris first. Mr. Ferris, in front of me, I have some questions that I'm going to ask you. If you would, please, sir, just answer these questions. I'll go one at a time. If there's anything that you need me to repeat, just wave at me or something, then I see it faster than.
I can hear you.
All right, I see it faster than the audio comes to me. What has been your community involvement?
Well, thanks for letting me interview tonight. I, I've been here in Isani for two years. My wife and I moved back to Isani. She's from here. I grew up in South Dakota and so we're planning to raise our kids here. We've got little kids in elementary and planning to raise them here. Since we've been here, I've gotten more involved. Community involvement has always been pretty important to us. One of the first things we did here is we organized a big national night out event for our neighborhood. Chief Myers said it was one of the biggest he's seen here in Isani. And you know, it's, that's important to us, is developing connections. I've begun serving on the board of our church here in Isani. And I've also kind of, I volunteered on some school initiatives as well with Cambridge Isani School.
Okay, what is your business-related background?
I currently work as a real estate agent. I've been licensed for five years and sold residential homes, mostly around the North Metro. We lived in the Twin Cities for five years before moving up here. And so I've sold a little bit around here, but mostly down in the North Metro. I also have a background in property management, both commercial and also residential Class A condominiums. And so I've got a degree in accounting and I've applied that in property management field as well. So I'd say my background is mostly, professional background is mostly focused on real estate and property management.
And what strengths will you bring to the EDA?
I think some of my experience and knowledge will be applicable. I think one of the biggest strengths I'd say is that, you know, I'm a pretty invested community member. I, I want to see Isani grow and flourish, you know, and I feel like there's going to be some learning in terms of like participating on the Economic Development Authority, learning about kind of the issues and just, and so. But I, I feel like I have a strong desire to serve the community and so. So anyway, I feel like that's probably the biggest asset in addition to my other skills and experience, my professional background.
And what do you see as potential future opportunities and commercial growth for Isani?
I'd say the two that stick out, probably the marketing or recruitment of business for the already shovel-ready lots and industrial park. I also think the 65 corridor is a pretty, sorry, is a pretty strategic location. You know, however, I, there's quite a bit that I am not familiar with and, you know, that I would need to learn about in terms of city zoning and city planning and so, you know, so I, I'm coming into this with kind of a posture of learning as well, you know, I wouldn't say I have a strict agenda of what I need, what the Isani needs to do.
Okay, and lastly, can you attend meetings the first Tuesday of each month, starting at 7:30 PM or immediately following the 7:00 PM City Council meeting, whichever is later?
Yes, I should be able to do that.
Okay, with that being said, I thank you, Mr. Ferris. The next applicant is Mr. Luke Merrill.
Mayor, if I may interrupt, I would like to make note for the minutes that Councilmember Burgley has joined the meeting.
Awesome, welcome, Councilman Burgley.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Merrill, if you'd step up to the podium here, I'll ask you the same five questions. Number one is, what has been your community involvement?
All right, thanks for having me, guys. So my community involvement is pretty strong. I grew up on Isani my whole life. I participated in high school sports, middle school sports. I went to Cambridge Isani Schools. I was always involved with my friends around town. I was involved with the Isani activities. And then I went to UMD after I graduated high school and I was also involved there in many clubs. I was the economics club president. I was on the Dean's Student Advisory Council. I basically did all sorts of leadership and teamwork, groups and activities to try and build my skill sets. So after college, I could come back a more trained professional. After college, I came back and I was doing my own thing, basically started my own business. And I tried to get involved with the city, with the City Planning Commission, first of all. I was on that for a few months before, basically I had to get re-interviewed, just like this process right now. And I didn't get that spot back, but immediately after that meeting, I got offered a spot on the County Park Board. So ever since then, the last four and a half, I think four years, I've been on the County Park Board and I've been pretty avid with being involved with that, basically planning how to develop the county parks, which is, I mean, that's directly related to economic development. So that's stuff that I've been involved with in the community and I've also been on the EDA for the last four or five months.
You kind of answered two as well, what is your business-related background in that same sentence?
Sure.
So I'm going to skip over that.
I'm going to answer it again, though.
Go ahead.
Okay, so basically what I do, I have my own self-run business and I actually consult with, consult and advertise for over 40 automotive companies. So I also do videography and I kind of made my own route with that. So my business-related experience is actually pretty strong because I worked for so many different companies across a broad spectrum of automotive, from tools to parts to even just other advertising agencies. So I have a lot of experience with that and I think that's important to kind of have a broad base of knowledge.
And what's your strengths you'll bring to the EDA?
Sure, so I think my biggest strength is actually my work ethic. I'm always trying to improve myself, never settle for just being average, you know. And my, also my teamwork, I feel is pretty good and critical thinking. So I think I can apply, you know, what I know from the community, from the city as a, as a whole, as well as my educational background and be pretty good for this position.
And what do you see as potential future opportunities and commercial growth for Isani?
Sure, so what really excites me about Isani is the industrial growth. I've really liked the shovel-ready properties and the fact that they're sort of tailored for industrial companies. I see Isani as more of a blue-collar, industrial-type community. I don't think it's really right for like a big, you know, retail, commercial development. But I think that small businesses are important here and I'm really excited about the commercial growth opportunities as far as industrial.
And can you attend meetings the first Tuesday of each month, starting at 7:30 PM or immediately following the 7 o'clock City Council meeting, whichever is later?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Merrill.
Thank you.
Any discussion by the council?
If you don't mind, I'd like to go first. I personally like to see Luke continue on at that seat, just for one of the couple of reasons. Is Luke has lived here his whole life. I've known that, you know, quite a while. He's come a long ways from earlier when he first started on here. Second of all, he kind of got shafted with that four month, that couple of months that he was filling in his term.
He did take over somebody else's seat.
He did, at that time. And then again, he took over somebody else's short-term seat again. We're not really giving him a full potential chance to see what he can do and he's been here doing it. You know what I mean? Nothing against Mr. Ferris. I do know that there is an open seat on Park and Rec. That might be another good fit for something like him for that. Luke had, did apply for the Park and Rec Board and then he found out there was an open seat on EDA, which I think that was more of his passion at that time.
Well, I think our Park and Rec actually collides with the County Park and Rec. That was another reason.
Yep, but I think he wanted to get on with the EDA anyway.
He did, that was his passion. He told me himself.
That's just my two cents worth. I, I don't, Luke's never gotten able to fill out a full term yet and he's done every effort to, to do that. It's just, it's kind of been bad timing for him.
Anything you'd like to say, Councilman Gordon?
I mean, I think I, I have some questions, I guess, or one, just one question.
Turn your mic off.
Two of them, if, oh, thanks. I'd have some, like, one question for the two of you, I guess, which is that all right if I ask a?
Absolutely.
Okay. You know, you both kind of mentioned shovel-ready jobs, or not shovel-ready jobs, but shovel-ready industrial properties. And I know we have some right now that we're currently trying to, to get rid of. But I mean, is that something that you see encouraging the city to do in the future? Or is that something that you're, you're just looking at because they're available now? That that's something that you like or is it something that you, you'd like to see more of?
Sure, so I'll go first on this. I like the shovel-ready properties. I think they're a great incentive for businesses to come into Isani. There's lots of other places that they could go, but the fact that there's a shovel-ready program is huge for commercial development. It's just an extra incentive. I don't, I don't really mind seeing it in the future. As, you know, I think you're talking about like after we're out of current properties? Is that, okay. So I mean, I guess if it's successful, we could continue with it, but I'm, I'd just like to see where it goes for now, personally.
Mr. Ferris, you need that question repeated, sir, or can you?
No, I think I, I think I got it. I, I'd say just from a real estate perspective, like marketing properties, you know, I brought that up mostly because the city has already invested and developed or has the shovel-ready lots. And so I think because of that, you know, there's an opportunity for marketing and recruitment towards those. I don't know, you know, I think in terms of like past, you know, past the development of the current lots, if there are, you know, like, I, I feel like whatever the, whatever the Economic Development Authority is doing needs to fit into kind of the strategic city plan and for the development and so. I don't know, I don't think a city, a city or organization has to be married to something just because that's the way we've been doing it. I think it just has to fit into, into the plan for the city.
Okay, thank you, guys. That was kind of all I was wondering about.
Councilman Collison or Councilman Burgley, you have any questions?
Just one for the both of them. And if you can, try and, you know, just kind of brief it up in, in a few sentences. We have a lot of local businesses that are suffering right now due to the pandemic. Whether it be retail or commercial because of employee, you know, reduction or what have you. But I was just, if, if you could give me your thoughts or, and the rest of the council and mayor, your thoughts on that situation as far as what would you do to, I guess, help those local businesses thrive? It's not only, you know, we're not only trying to obviously attract more businesses, but we, we really, you know, strongly want to obtain the ones that are here already. I'm just, I'm just curious on your thoughts on that. And I know it's probably kind of hard to brief that up in just a few sentences, but that's, I guess that's my question.
I'll go first on this one, too. Personally, I think that the city and everybody needs to band together and stand up against, specifically the Walz administration right now. These small businesses that are going out like the Creamery and Family Pathways as a result of this COVID situation is unacceptable. Businesses are essential to the city and it kind of affects everybody, especially when something like the Creamery or Family Pathways goes out. And I think we should stand up and let businesses open more. I guess it's, it's impossible basically, but I think that's something that the city could do to help businesses, is let them open regardless of what the governor may say or may not say. And also I know there's, you guys had the loan, the loan options that had been briefly discussed when I started on the EDA and I think those were helpful. And if there's any more aid available, which I'm sure there will be as time comes, to offer that to the businesses.
Mr. Ferris?
Well, it's a difficult question to answer. Partly, I don't know the extent of the authority that the Economic Development Authority has in terms of what, what we can grant to be allowed or not allowed. It seems like most of this, you know, is coming down from like the state level. And so I would, I would agree that I, I think more leniency needs to be allowed for letting them open. But in terms of what we as a city can legally or help in doing, you know, I, I'm not sure what powers, you know, all the economic authority completely has. So I, it's hard for me to answer the question because I'm not familiarized yet with the committee.
All right, Mr. Councilman Collison, I hope you're okay with those answers.
Yeah, thank you, guys. I know it was a difficult question, but I just, I just kind of shook my hip there and it's a, it's a hot topic in the times we're in right now. So thank you for your answers.
Councilman Burgley, anything from you, sir?
No, I think Councilman Collison hit it right on the head there and I think that, you know, I think it's something that, you know, we're, we're looking at it as a EDA and as a council all the time. And so definitely something that not only should be addressed by them, but as us as well. So thank you, Councilman Collison, for asking the question.
And I'll kind of sum that up by saying the city has given loans. Ms. Wood, you'll have to help me in the correct terminology here, but we gave the pandemic loan to 17 applicants, right? 17?
17 or 19 grants were approved.
So we did have the pro-
I want to say it was 19, but.
We, we did have the process where they could apply for a $5,000 loan, which we did give out 17 or 19, one or the other, out to these businesses. From my understanding, there is possibly more that could be coming. Am I?
From my understanding, we did, we used, from the CARES funding that we received, we did implement a COVID relief grant program. And we had allocated approximately $70,000 and some change towards that program that we dispersed to approximately 17, 19 businesses in the amount of up to 5,000. Most of them were 5,000, but it all depended on the need that they, they had. My understanding is that the county has received more funds for COVID relief things. So I would encourage businesses to reach out to Isani County and see what is available there. I know staff, Ms. Solomon's digging into what, what opportunities are available. But at this point in time, cities have not been given more funds to disperse.
So my point being is, is there is a chance that it could come across the EDA's table, which it would be discussed and ultimately would, I don't want to say it is, but it isn't, an advisory board, so to speak, to the council. And then it gets pushed to the council and the council makes ultimately the last decision. But I've kind of felt like as far as our legal boundaries go as a city standpoint, we've done what we can. And if we do defy governor orders, we could possibly put ourselves in heavy legalities and, excuse my French, but I'll be damned if I let that happen. So I don't think this council wants that to happen either. So we're trying what we can and, and we'll keep trying within our legal boundaries.
What some people have to understand is-
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Councilman Burgley.
I would just like to say, Ms. Wood's brought up a good point that even though we are out of funds ourselves, I think that one thing that we should do as an EDA and, and the city staff that tries to help business is look for resources outside the city because if people need more help than what we have to offer, I think there is help out there. Because not only does Isani County have funds, but I think they, what's that group up in Mora, the Regional Development, I think they got some COVID funds too to hand out too, so.
Yeah, the ERCDC, correct.
I believe, yeah, I believe that, that's who it is.
Go ahead, Councilman Lundin.
As much as, you know, I'm not going to sit up here and say I agree or disagree with our governor. That's not the place to do it, but, you know, we have to realize that there's other circumstances. Legality, as the mayor had said, that we could potentially put ourselves in by doing that. You know, I don't, you know, my beliefs are what I believe and I'm not going to force that upon anybody else as well as I wish they wouldn't force their beliefs on me. But, and that right now isn't the time or place to discuss those beliefs. So, you know, with that being said, I think, you know, we did reach out to businesses and they did respond to that relief money. As a matter of fact, I've been thanked profusely by one of them and he's actually my barber. Barber's on the main, or, you know, Main Street Barber, Todd Estes. And he said thank you profusely to me and to thank the council also for that action. So I do know that businesses that did get, did get money, I know that they've been very thankful for what they've gotten. And, you know, if, if there's any way we could do, done more, I would like to do more for them. I totally agree, you know, the businesses are struggling. I hate seeing it.
Well, we're supposed to have a pleasant discussion tomorrow with Governor Walz, so we'll see what he has to say tomorrow.
But, anyway, that being said.
All right, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept Luke Merrill as EDA Board Member.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundin to accept Luke Merrill as the vacant EDA member. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Dan Collison seconds.
And a second by Dan Collison. All in favor, state your name and say aye.
Dan Collison, aye.
Paul Burgley, aye.
Steve Lundin, aye.
Jimmy Gordon, aye. And I would also just say, John, I think we could use you in some other areas and it's nothing personal, but I agree that Luke does need to probably have a little more time to see what he can really do, so.
I agree with Jimmy Gordon, Councilmember Gordon. Mr. Ferris, definitely would like to see you again for another, you know, opening. So please don't get discouraged. I appreciate your time and your efforts today.
Here, here.
With that being said, it passes 5-0 for Luke Merrill. I'll end it by saying, Mr. Ferris, there is an open seat on Park and Rec. I would highly encourage you to apply for that position. That's where I started. So I love our parks and our recreation within the city. It's, it's a fun city. I myself am a, as of January 1st, I was a four-year resident, so I'm not that much more ahead of you. My wife has family that's been here for quite some time and, and I'm kind of in the same circumstance as you. I started at Park and Rec and here I am. So I highly encourage you to go to Park and Rec. Don't get discouraged by not making Economic Development Authority. Park and Rec is, is another board, obviously, that deals with the Park and Rec within the city of Isani. And it's another advisory board that pushes your ideas and thoughts to the council. And I don't think- And I don't think any of us have really ever said no to the Park and Rec, so they've come up with some good stuff. So, I would encourage you to apply for that position, sir.
Especially-
And I appreciate your time and, and showing up and, and applying for this as well.
Thank you for having me today, and I'll certainly check out those other openings and opportunities.
Yeah, especially, you know, Jimmy Gordon, or, you know, Mr. Gordon is the only representative from the council that's on Park and Rec. So, what you guys come up with, he's the only person on the council that's there. So, you know, he's one voice again over as, as many. So, it's, we take our parks in Isani pretty serious, just as much as we do the EDA. And, and it's pretty, it's pretty nice to have, to have somebody else be on the advisory board that we don't see things either.
I like new, fresh minds on there, Mr. Ferris. You'd be a perfect fit for it. You have children as well, from what I heard you say. I'm sure they attend a lot of parks and recreation within the city of Isani, so I, I just, I think it'd be a good spot for you to get your feet wet. So, by all means, check that out.
And it'd be great to have your fresh perspective in the park, on the parks board. That's my input. Thank you very much.
I concur.
Well, thank you, everyone.
So, Mayor and Council, before you, we have the 2021 New Year Resolution for Appointing to the City Commissions and Advisory Board. In paper before you, we have last year's 2020s, so you can see who was appointed to which committee or board. Please let staff know if you'd like to keep those appointments the same, or if you'd like to see anything different. This would be within that resolution before you on item number one. And then we're also looking for the city to designate another, another year for a mayor pro tem, for someone to represent as the presiding officer in the mayor's absence.
I make a motion that we keep the advisory board the same as it is.
I would have to agree unless somebody wants to be removed. Speak now or forever, hold your peace.
I know you want it, but-
No, I'm good.
I've been enjoying the time there.
If you're enjoying it, then by all means, you, you keep going strong at it, Councilman Gordon. Just don't be upset when I show up.
What's that?
Don't be upset when I show up.
Ah, yeah, I won't be.
I just sit in the audience and try to sit on my hands, but it doesn't always work. But I, I would agree. If anybody else has any discussion or, or wants to be removed or changed or anything, Councilman Collison, Councilman Burgley, are you okay? What do you think?
I'm good with the way it was previous year.
Councilman Burgley?
I'm good. I'm good.
The consensus-
Do you think I need to-
We had a motion.
I'll second it.
Oh, there was somebody talking.
I think that was background. Also, if you, before you do a motion, if you could, would it be to keep the same for the mayor pro tem as well?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, I had a motion by Councilman Lundin to keep it as is, and a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, state your name and say aye.
Dan Collison, aye.
Councilman Burgley? Star six, Councilman Burgley. There you go.
Paul Burgley, aye.
Steve Lundin, aye.
Jimmy Gordon, aye.
And myself, aye. Therefore, it passes five zero.
Wait a minute, I got shafted. I gotta-
Yeah, you're the pro tem again. Moving on to K two, the resolution designating an official newspaper, appointing, I remember last year when I screwed this up, yeah. I screwed that up last year.
Who are we using now?
Yeah, who are we using now?
The official newspaper that we have is the Isani Shisago County Star. We did receive a bid from them, and we do have Mr. Jeff Andrews on the Zoom if you'd like to hear from him. We received a bid from County News Review, but as you may recall, they had gone to more of like a subscription-based newspaper. They don't, it doesn't seem like they meet the statute requirements to be an official newspaper because of that low distribution within our corporal limits. So, staff is recommending that we stay with Isani Shisago County Star.
I make a motion to stay with this, yeah.
And then for-
Do we want to hear from Jeff, or do we just?
If you have any questions for him, or-
I think they've done a remarkable job, so I, there's nothing bad that I'm going to say. I like the fact that my picture's not in the paper all the time. I'm okay, I'm okay with the, the city being in the paper, as long as it's positive. But I don't need my photo in there all the time.
I know they got too many stories about North Branch and Cambridge, in my opinion.
Right.
We need more, more Isani stories. But they did, I, I did read one on the roundabout story. I mean, that was a complicated issue, and they did a really, really nice job of covering that.
Well, that's Councilman Burgley that's being noisy. Real good, Councilman Burgley.
Mr. Andrews, do you want, is there anything that you'd like to share?
No, I appreciate your support, and thank you for the vote of confidence. I'm, I'm here to answer questions if you have anything.
You aren't jacking the prices up, are you?
I would just like to say that the Star did a good job last year when, when we brought forth a, a letter to the editor, and even though we took issue with their editor emeritus, I think it was Gene Johnson, they still printed it, and I thought that was very forthcoming of them. And, you know, as, as your person that's, that's, that sits on our council meeting said, you know, they just tried to promote freedom of the press, so we just appreciate you printing our letter to the editor.
Yeah, thank you.
That did blow me out of the water, Jeff, that, that was actually printed, our rebuttal on that article. So, I, I would agree with Councilman Burgley. My hat's off to you for doing that, sir. I, I, there's no issue as far as I'm concerned, unless you gentlemen have something, otherwise you want to say. I, I do have a motion from Councilman Lundin to keep it as is.
And Mayor, I would like to point out, Mayor and Council, that all other institutions and organizations within the resolution for the banking services, bond council, those are all staying the same as last year.
Do I have a second to keep it the same?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, state your name and say aye.
Dan Collison, aye.
Paul Burgley, aye.
Steve Lundin, aye.
Jimmy Gordon, aye.
And myself, aye. Therefore, the resolution passes five zero. Thank you, Jeff, for showing up, and keep doing the good work, sir.
Just real quick, I, I appreciate both of our local newspapers very much. I've seen a lot of the smaller town newspapers, not necessarily fail, but go away because of the times we're in. And I know my dad's hometown, they've lost a few, few of the local papers up that way, and, and I do appreciate both of our local papers.
Keep up the good work, Jeff.
Thank you.
We'll move on to K three, the resolution waiving renewal fee for annual liquor and pawn shop license for 2021. The council, we had this discussion. Ms. Wood, if you want to fill us in here?
Yes, Mayor and Council, we had this discussion the last, I believe it was Committee of the Whole meeting, and it was to show that we realize and empathize with our businesses in town who are struggling due to the closures that have been mandated on them. Part of that, and we, we've seen it in some other cities, but Isani wanted to also, our council shared that they also wanted to do what they could. And something that was suggested and discussed was to waive the liquor license fees within the city, and also, we do have one pawn shop annual renewal fee to waive that as well.
So, what, so it wasn't if they applied for them in 2021, or 2020, we were going to waive them in 2021?
Correct. This would only be for 2021 renewal license fees. Yes, they would have had to have had it in 2020.
They still have to register, though, as they would, we just wouldn't charge them anything.
Correct. The fee would be waived. So, you'll see in the resolution before you, we do have six businesses that this would impact. It'd be Sandbrook Golf Course, Thunder Brothers Brewery, the VFW, Winter Greens Golf and Grill, Junction Bowl, and Northern Pond.
I make a motion to accept.
I'll second it.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundin to accept, and a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, state your name and say aye.
Dan Collison, aye.
Councilman Burgley, star six.
Paul Burgley, aye.
Steve Lundin, aye.
Jimmy Gordon, aye.
And myself, aye. Therefore, the resolution passes five zero. Moving on to K four, the liquor store architect proposal review and resolution to accept proposal. You said we had one.
So, Mayor and Council, we do have both architects present. We have Mike with Woodset, who is present here, that he will share some information about his bids, and I can pull them up if you need me to put those up. Other way, and then we also have Corey Brenton with Brenton, so he can also share. He's on, via Zoom. And council can, you know, ask him questions, discuss it. I do have a resolution with some blank lines in there, so if we do want to appoint an architect for our liquor store project, we'd be able to make that motion this evening and move forward. So, at this point in time, I think I'll turn it over to Mike with Woodset. He's going to come on up and share some information about his proposal.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Mike Anglin. Thank you for having me and allowing me to be here in person tonight. Hopefully, you've had a chance to take a look at the proposal that I put together for you. And so, within the proposal, I think the biggest thing is that with where you all are at in terms of the amount of work that you've put together, in my opinion, typically in our project, we would do preliminary design, schematic design. We have different design phases, and in my opinion, based on the schedule, in terms of when you want to begin construction, when you want to be open, which is by Thanksgiving of next, of this year, we would want to begin right away in design development. That's not to say that we wouldn't offer up some design ideas. However, I just wanted to let you know that that's why I'm saying it's not applicable in this case. So, I'm excited for the project because it, you guys seem very energized by it, very motivated, and to have your liquor store manager on board, too, as part of the team, I, I feel like we could really get off to a very good start. One of the things that I did include in the proposal was all of your information that you've put together and were able to send to me. And then also, the other thing that I put together was this design schedule and also the construction schedule. So, in our opinion, as a firm, and, and for me here tonight, you all seem very organized and ready to hit this pretty hard. One of the requests was to put together two different proposals based on, I guess, different schedules. But the way that I took a look at it is, if you want to be open by Thanksgiving of this year, I just laid out a proposal and a schedule for how to get that done. I do have a lot of experience. We do as a firm, working on, I'll just say, fast-track projects and whether or not we want to do multiple bid packages to get site and structural items, long lead-time items ordered. I've worked in that capacity. And also, I do have experience with working with bringing on a, whether it be a construction manager or someone, so that we can begin to talk construction sequencing, pricing, and schedule. And so, I'm very flexible to that as well. I've worked with cities, counties, and other government agencies in order to make that happen as well. So, I do have experience with that. So, what we would begin to do is dive right into design development here, as I've, as I've laid out, programming in terms of the quantifying the size of the building, you've done a nice job with that. And then we would begin to develop concept floor plans, do a building code review, review construction type. And we would also begin to discuss mechanical and electrical. We understand we'd be working with you, Jason, as the city engineer. However, we would jump on that right away and begin talking electrical, mechanical systems with you. We do at Woodset have that in-house, so we are, we do have all services under one roof, which is another great advantage of working with us. But it's really important to begin to discuss those things. How much space do we need for that? What type of systems would be ideal for you? And so, we would really jump in and start to work within, I like to say, reality right off the bat. And then we would also take a look at the site, overall site design. Again, just working on getting the building situated in the right way in order to have as many, to accommodate traffic flow and bringing in as many folks as possible. Upon an agreement of the design development phase and everybody feeling comfortable with that, we would move directly into construction document phase. And that's where the bulk of that work would, would be within our fee. It's to put together bid documents with all of our different design services. We would also be able to then transition into bidding and construction administration. We like to offer this at an hourly rate, so we had fixed fee for the two phases, but then to provide construction administration and bidding hourly. We like to do that because we want to be fair with our fee, just, you know, as needed, what we need to do to help and assist during bidding and construction. And so, that's what we like to do during that phase. So, I'm here tonight just to answer any questions that you may have. But again, we're really excited to be here. With that, I'll, I'll turn it over to you.
I know Councilman Lundin will jump on this right away. However, I do have the liquor store manager in the audience, and I'm very passionate, very concerned, and very, I don't know that concerned is the word, but I care for what the liquor store manager has to say.
You bet.
John, if you have any questions, I would like you to get on mic here, sir, and shoot away. This is your store, and I intend to keep you until you retire anyway, so.
Oh, here we go. Yeah, I, I mean, it's, it's explained really well, and I do like that as far as all that's entailed. And I think Mr. Becker and I talked today about the importance of easy in, as easy out, as you just mentioned. That's so important to us. I want to get that traffic, and I want to get that curbside rolling. I mean, that online presence for us is going to be huge. And I, I know it's, obviously, right now with the pandemic, it's, it's trickles, but if we can catch that traffic and get those people in and out, and then, and I know Jason Cook and I have talked about the availability of RV-type parking spots and boats and things like that. This, this is how we're going to gain it. We did really well this year. Obviously, the pandemic is what caused that. But we want to just get right from the get-go and get rolling once this thing gets up and running. I think, Mike, you might have had some questions as far as some points of it that we discussed today, and maybe Mike can address those. But it's nice to have another opportunity and another perspective for the pitch truth, so. And you've designed liquor stores, so that, that helps to have that background, too. So, and it's important to me. And, and obviously, we talked about the, we don't want to be in the northwest face. We want to be southwest, so just because of, I've worked at a store that was northwest and the ice and the snow, and that wouldn't be good in the winter in this environment, so. But I, I do like what I see, so that's a good thing, so.
Mr. Becker, before you jump in, Ms. Wood, did you have something that you wanted to say? Or do you want Mike to go ahead? Go ahead, Mr. Becker, sorry. Ms. Wood is graciously bombing down to you, Mr. Becker.
One, first, first question, first point. On the bidding and construction fees, I understand you, you said you wanted that to go hourly. You want to maintain that flexibility. Would you guys be amicable to a not-to-exceed amount? Right? I mean, something so that we've got, at least on that portion, I've got a cap that I can understand we're not going to, not going to exceed.
We would be open to that. And typically, we put together our fees, and I, I did have an opportunity to, to speak to the city administrator and have-
If you wouldn't mind grabbing your mic, just hold on to it while you talk.
I did have an opportunity to speak with the city administrator, and, and I do have a dollar amount factored based on, you know, the size of project and what we anticipate to be that effort. And so, we could certainly include that reviser proposal for that as a not-to-exceed number.
So, I've been working to plan this, this project for quite some time and run kind of a lot of numbers on this. One question I've got is, between these two proposals, we end up with some fairly different, between the two proposals from Woodset and from Brenton, we end up with some pretty different prices per square foot in the end. Wonder if you could speak to that a little bit, about how do we end up with such a lower number with Woodset? Woodset?
Well, I think it's, I'm assuming that you're getting different numbers because they're both just very preliminary estimates, not really based on anything concrete. So I would just say, I can't speak for the other architect, but it's such a very early timeframe. My number is definitely based on a more conventionally framed building with the pitch roof, and based on some conversations that we've had. The one factor from an overall site design, I haven't had an opportunity to talk with the civil engineer, so that certainly is another variable. But I guess, in my opinion, based on our conversations that we've had, again, it's more of that conventional framing. I've looked at the preliminary floor plan. It is, you know, it's, it's a rectangle. And so in my opinion, to me, there's some opportunities to have the cost come in between that 175 and 200. So it's very preliminary, but I can understand how they're apples and oranges at this point. It's really not based on anything that's been developed or really thought of with a lot of detail, at least not for me. Again, I can't speak on behalf of the other architect.
I'm good for now.
One thing that we had talked about was whether or not the site plan cost was included in your proposal, Mike. And you had shared with me that the $350,000, which is what our engineer had estimated for that, would be included in the cost. I don't know if you reviewed that more, but is that still your mindset?
So you're talking about just an architectural site plan? I assume it's not a fully-designed civil plan with stormwater plans and utilities, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Right? Oh, we'll let Jason clarify.
No, the, I guess, just for the, the construction cost number that you had, the two to 2.5, is that including the actual construction cost of the site as well, the parking lot, utilities, and all that?
You know, it is. But again, in terms of, I mean, I drove by the site. I took a look at it. There's obviously utilities stubbed into that, at least from my perspective. There's, there's power, there's water, there's a hydrant right there. In terms of the number of access points, whether or not you need to accommodate for stormwater onsite, if there's a regional stormwater plan within that development, it seems as though it's kind of a rather new development there. So with that, I was thinking that we could try to get in there with that number, but there's so many variables with the site that I can't answer for certainty. But again, just based on how we've talked about this, from the overall configuration of the building, conventionally framed, you know, and whether, the siding, the grading, it appears that there is some, whether or not we need to bring in a lot of fill. I don't know the soil conditions either, so whether or not it's suitable, or if we need to bring in more engineered fill. I'm not sure if you've had a geotech report.
No, not yet, no.
No, no yet. So there's a lot of those things that I'm not factoring in, because I don't know if that's relevant. So to me, to come in with 250 to 300, you know, to try to accommodate for worst-case scenario, I definitely didn't do that with a construction number. So certainly, a lot more to figure out from a cost standpoint.
Sure. Yeah, I guess it was just the idea of whether or not you were including something for a parking lot in those costs, or if you were just strictly looking at building.
No, I was thinking site.
Anybody else have any questions? John, you're good. Mike, you're good. Jason, you're good. Councilmember Collison or Burgley, any questions?
I guess none, none for me at this time. Thank you.
I'm good.
Councilman Gordon.
Why don't Steve ask your questions, because you know so much more about this than I do.
I was, I was gonna hold him to last, because I know he's, he could go forever.
Let him go, because he's probably gonna answer the questions I want to ask anyway.
The only questions that I, hang on, he's pretty much answered. I do not want to see that.
You know, the only questions that I would had, but he's already answered them. I do not want a flat roof on this building. I don't care. Minnesota's not a flat roof state. Never will be, never has been, and it's a nightmare. I, like I said, in my years of experience, it doesn't work in Minnesota. If we didn't have snow load, it'd be a different story. We have a snow load. And every, every flat roof, I don't care if you can guarantee it for 50 years, it's gonna leak. It'll leak, it'll leak, it'll leak. I seen him put it on. Two days after they put the roof on, it leaked. You know, I just, that is my biggest thing. And I, I, I don't care what anybody says, and I don't think it's gonna be that, I don't think that outrageous numbers that was told out front was gonna be that high a number. It just isn't gonna be. It can't be. And like I said, I think this building can be built very well, very, we don't need to put up, tip up concrete. That's just for speed. That's all that's for. It doesn't do anything else. But we're not hiring a Carl Sanderson. We're not hiring a Martinson. If we did, this thing would be out of our budget. And I just.
We'd have the Taj Mahal. What was that one liquor store, John? I think you showed me. The thing looked like a library slash, or maybe it was Mr. Becker showed it to me. So one of you guys showed me a liquor store that literally it looked like a city hall slash library slash.
That's Marshall.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't need that kind of liquor store, nor do we want a pole barn.
Same designer built Worthington. But Worthington doesn't look anything like Marshall.
But I mean, we just don't need, we don't need to go that route.
No.
And I think that, you know, being smart, looking at numbers, looking at how things are gonna get done, you know, and having our two cents worth in here. Like I said, we don't need an interior designer. He's sitting right back there in that blue shirt. He knows what he wants in there. Like he said, I don't want no carpeting. I want stained concrete. That's responsible. He knows what colors he wants the walls. That's responsible.
I even told him I'd put sparklies in his floor, and he didn't even want it.
But like he said, he wants 14-foot-high ceilings. Okay, he's gonna carry the whole building across at 14 feet. So now that, he doesn't need 14-foot-high ceilings in the retail space. He got two feet. 12 feet's enough for him. You got two feet of place to run duck work. The furnace for in this thing is sitting in, there's a furnace in the underside of that wall over there. You don't need to put rooftop units on it. We can find a spot for it. I don't, I don't think that's unrealistic. And I don't, to do that, we don't need to do those things.
Well, that's, that was my question too, Mike, as far as outdoor refrigeration and things like that. I'm assuming that, well, that's more of a Jason question. You'd have to put bollards around them so people don't run into them and those types of things, I suppose. Like a lot of commercial buildings, it's what they do.
You also wanted to use the equipment's heat for heat inside.
Recovery.
Recovery, there it is.
Heat reclaim, yep.
Heat reclaim. And a lot of times, a lot of that, you got condensers sitting outside. You put those up on, you, actually, you want to put them in a fenced-in area so that people don't walk by going like this. That happens all the time.
Right.
So, you know, those are, and that deters people from running into things too. So, I mean, these, these are all, like I said, could be, all be fiscal responsible things done.
Mayor, if I may, and Council, I think that Mike's gonna stick around for a little bit here. If we have further questions, I think maybe we will kick it over to Brenton, let Brenton explain their proposals. It was very nice of them to rework the numbers. We have had a few more meetings with Brenton earlier on, so I think that that fine-tuning is a little bit more with them. But I believe, and Jason can clarify for me better, I think in their original proposal, they had Jason's civil engineer costs wrapped up into theirs, which was not corrected. So it was in there twice with Jason's estimate. So they did revise that one. They know that we do not want to go with pre-cast, but that is why you see a pre-cast proposal in there, because they wanted to revise what they had submitted prior. So if I could, I'll turn that over to Corey.
Well, thank you so much, members of the council, Honorable Mayor. We are videoconferencing on our vacation from Montana. It's a beautiful state here. So if this gets a little stuttery, our internet connection isn't necessarily the best. We are having a little bit of a hard time hearing, so if I do something like this, please repeat. But as, as mentioned, you know, we, we are, we are excited to be a part of this conversation with you and giving us an opportunity to explain a little bit more about our proposal and how we've kind of looked at the project. Just a little bit about Brunson, I don't know if you've had a chance to look over any of the information that we had sent. But, you know, we're certainly a value-based firm. We have mechanical engineers and electrical and plumbing engineers as well, in-house architects, and we have an office in Hopkins. And, you know, I, a lot of similarities between our firms. I think we both share, you know, some questions about process relative to the different phases of design that would certainly be needed on this. You know, originally, when we were introduced to this project, it was, hey, what's the, what's the cost per square foot recommendation for a project like this? And what would you say that that would be? And of course, you never want to throw out the Taj Mahal number, but, you know, you look for value. And we're, you know, looking at that, certainly, the lower cost, on the lower cost, is certainly looking at a pre-cast structure, looking at a low-slope roof. As Lundin had mentioned, you know, he's had some challenges with low, with low-slope roofs in Minnesota. But as far as costs are concerned, as far as being able to give you the best bang for your buck, if that is the direction you go, placing rooftop units on a low-slope roof with a simplistic pre-cast exterior that meets your city ordinances and your planning and zoning ordinances for materials and colors is, is one of the best products you can, you can certainly propose for a project like that. But that being said, I will also say that I had very limited information about members of the council's opinions on the direction that the project would go. So let me back up a step and say that one of the things that we would certainly want to have a discussion with you about is, we have what we call the project triangle. And Mike in the audience there with Woodset probably has had this conversation with clients in the past. So we, we have this project triangle. If you can imagine a triangle, of course, it has three points. At one point is quality. At another point is cost. And at the other point is quantity. That's square footage. This is real simple. If you give us control of two corners of that project, we'll make the third one happen. But we gotta play this game fair. You can't have control over the square footage of the project and the cost and make us slave to try to make the project work. It will not happen. And you'll end up with a disaster project. Because of that, if you say we can't spend a red cent more than $2.5 million, you also can't say, if that's the case, then I want, you know, a standing seam metal roof, and I want this, this, and this. However, if the flip side is true, and you say, all right, we want a pitched roof with a metal truss system, we know the mechanical might cost a little bit more, but we want you to explore that. I think both Mike and, and our firm would do the same thing. We would sit down and we'd go, here's the deal. Here's the pros, here's the cons. Here's the mechanical system. Our mechanical engineers will evaluate whether it makes sense to do certain things and make recommendations, and you would be given options. The way this was rolled out was, what's the cost for this building? And that's a very, very difficult thing to answer without making assumptions. And, you know, we've done interviews like this before, where we've actually put together a concept design. Eh, 50% of the time, it works, where they're impressed. And 50% of the time, that's not what we want. We don't want to hire that firm because that's not what we want. And that's really not the intention. The intention is to, to have conversations about the fit that the firm brings to the table. We have been, Brunton Architects and Engineers, we've been in business since 2007, so 14, going on 14 years. We have received probably about 35% of our work based upon failures of other firms. Why? Because a lot of times, firms come in and they say that they need a ridiculous amount of money to, to build XYZ structure. We come in and we say, you know what, let's look, let's look at this a little bit more. Well, where's the site? What are the concerns with the site, as Mike was pointing out? You know, what, what can we do to give you the best bang for your buck while honoring the project triangle and being aware of some of these hot buttons that you folks are concerned about? And that's what we do. We evaluate that, and we will, we will dive into the engineering day one to make sure that we give you options. We say, if we do this, this might cost this, but if we do that. I think what we, what we're trying to share with you is, if you were to go down the road for, for pre-cast building, the costs for that building, being very detailed with some assumptions, are what we propose. But that's not saying that we can't take that pre-cast exterior wall structure that gives you the high-speed erection times, allowing the project to certainly meet the Thanksgiving schedule. But we can also put a steel pitched truss on that and also put a standing seam metal on it and have a 412 pitch or something like that. Something to keep in mind, though, is that the shape of the building with a 412 pitch at 100-foot span, that's, that's an awful big roof. And, and that product will cost more money than a low-slope EPDM membrane. But we recognize that going back to the project triangle, it still might be what you want. And that's fine. The great thing about it is we'll explore options for you and work together with you as a team. The thing that I think makes us a little bit different is that we actually have a construction interface. We, we actually have a construction company. Tom Mccone, who's sitting to my left here, we're in a hotel.
Good evening, everybody.
We're in a hotel in Montana. He actually is heads up the construction division. He actually is the one that generates the cost estimates, certainly interfaces with the, with the contractor, make sure that, that they don't try to pull the wool over our eyes. Again, we're trying to protect you. And so we bring that to the table. And, you know, yes, we do some construction, little pieces here and there, but we don't do municipal construction on our own. So there's no conflict of interest. We bring the tools that will be utilized to protect you guys in this process to the table day one. We feel that makes us, that makes us a little bit different. Since costs were of concern, that's one of the reasons that we had brought the concept together for the possibility of pre-cast. You're gonna spend more money in material for pre-cast, but you're gonna spend, spend way less money in labor. COVID concerns have slowed down construction crews. We already have a problem with trade issues, trade concerns about brick layers and stone layers. They're hard to find. Pre-cast is maintenance-free. Again, going back to the project triangle, if pre-cast is not something that you want, we can certainly work in other venues. We have done several, lots and lots of projects in other structural systems that are out there. So, for example, Monticello Fire, you know, that was a $5 million project and brought it in at 4.1 million. We are always trying, to be honest with you, we like to be able to brag about that. Mayor Fire was brought in, $75,000 under budget. Newport, probably over a million under budget, but it's, it's right now at $7.2 million. And so those projects all were being taxed with tight, extremely tight budgets. And we rolled up our sleeves and said, let's see how we can do this for you. Let's see what we can do to, to, looking at the project triangle, how we can get from point A to point B, and do it in a way that, that gets you a building that's 100-year building. Okay? Yet, we're familiar with fast-tracking, you know, I think, and the different procurement methods for, for the construction side of the building as well. You know, Mike is right, you're, you guys are up against a challenge here with regards to schedule, not necessarily from a design perspective, but from, from a perspective of getting your products erected and, and ready for the other trades to, to work within the structure. We felt that, you know, the pre-cast, which can be, it's just an option, you don't have to do it, but pre-cast is brought to the site. It's ordered, it can be ordered early. You could bring it to the site, and that building would be enclosed in one week. One week. So from the foundations that are in the ground to enclosed, it'd be one week. So that's pretty, you know, of course, that depends on if you're gonna go to a metal structure and do a standing seam metal, that might change that. But, you know, the walls will be up, and the key is, in order to meet a Thanksgiving deadline, is to get it up as quickly as possible. So try to do as much upfront fast-tracking of those components as, as possible. Totally agree with that. And, you know, we would go through the same phases of the project, schematic design, design development, construction drawings, and then get that information out. We could also help you hire the construction manager, or if you want to do a design bid build, where you have a, a competitive process. The drawback to that is that the timing is not in our favor. We have to finish all the drawings and then have a bid period in accordance with Minnesota League of City limitations, you know, 21-day bid period. And two, you guys were just talking about your. Uh limitations, you know, twenty-one day bid period and two, you guys were just talking about your your publication, so it's very fitting to talk about that. Uh but you know, you have to have two advertisements and and then you got award and you got council meetings and all that stuff. It might make more sense to enter into an agreement with a construction manager. And um and get going on the design so that we can fast track. And get the uh precast or other, you know, the site work all done. Um get it done as quickly as possible, get it scheduled. Um so those are just some of the things that that we thought about. If you have questions about the. The cost estimates, we can certainly address some of that, but but as was mentioned earlier. It's one of those things where we had a, we had to make some assumptions. And so we did that in order to kind of give you a compare comparison and analysis between different systems. We we evaluated a precast. We evaluated a wood structure and a steel structure system, okay? Um can I, is it possible for me to to share a screen with you folks? Or no?
Yes, I believe you can. Was it the site plan by chance?
Say that again?
Is it the site plan?
No, actually it's not. Um if you um, we had sent the site plan up to, I think to Jason, so you could certainly look at that.
I do have that if you are gonna.
You have that? Oh, okay. Uh well, we could certainly look at that. I don't have that with me. You'd have to share that with with us, but what I was gonna do is. Is just uh do a screen share, just show you some projects, just. So you have a, you have a city ordinance, uh I'm sure you have a a um color and material ordinances that will require that. The facades of the building have a percentage of brick and and finishes that are approved by planning and zoning. I would assume that that is the case. Um and some of those finishes, you know, I know uh in other uh municipalities. Um precast meets that as long as um it's architectural grade, right? So some of those fin- yeah. And so, yeah, I, and I believe you do have that, so what I would like to do just really quick is just show you a couple buildings that. That uh are uh of that vintage.
Sure, you should be able to share your screen with us. I think I just have to prove it once you go.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna try this. If this, I hope I don't, uh oh. Okay, hold on here. No. I don't think we, I don't think it's gonna work and I'm afraid, I'm afraid I'll get cut off and then uh.
You could quickly email it. Do you wanna email it? Real quick?
Uh no, it it it's okay. It it, I was just gonna show some examples of um how nice and how aesthetic, how uh. How how these buildings can be, whether whether it's brick and mortar, which is gonna cost more money. Uh but you know, one of the things that, you know, the interior surfaces of the of the retail area, you know, having the ability to. Uh merchandise on the wall areas above the uh uh displays, you know, some of those pieces that that make up that space. You know, all of that stuff, we would certainly spend some time with John, the liquor store manager, going through ideas on that and 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 involve them. It's not, we don't design buildings in our office and send it to you. It's a very involved process. Uh back and forth and so we would certainly function in that. But the site plan, as you mentioned, you know, um just us just looking at that, I know initially it was brought up that, you know, it was, would be. Really convenient to have the entrance. Uh highly visible and to the northwest because of the connection to the property across the road. And I think it can be done, it can be, you, an entrance can be provided there. If you have that site plan, I can talk a little bit about that. But I think maybe the main entrance into the building might wanna be on the south. East, I'm sorry, southwest corner of the building so that it can be sheltered from those nasty northwest winds that we have. And have the building be the signage, right? So that when you come out of that adjacent drive that's across the street. That that you, that building just screams, hey, um here I am, yeah. Yeah, there you go. Okay, yeah, thank you so much for doing that. Yeah, wonderful. Um and so the thought is and and you know, having, pulling the traffic off the highway, super, super important. And so having the straight in uh path on that for those large trailers. Um I'm a snow, I'm usually snowmobile out here, but I'm skiing out here this time, but pulling, I pull a trailer, right? So you pull a trailer with snowmobiles in it. Um and yep, you got the spaces one through five or six, or it can even be bigger than that. But having the ability to do that, or if you're in a car that is maneuverable, you can pull up to the curb side, of course, this pandemic has. Made that even uh more uh productive. And then, and then looking at the ability to driver side back in on the backside of the facility. Have a small little bump out on the building as a possible dock, right there, yeah. And what you do is you have the driver side back in there, cause uh if you've ever driven semi, and I've driven semi a lot, I'm a farm kid. Um you, driver side backing is is so important uh for for backing into a loading dock. And so then have that traffic and then exit out that drive on the northwest corner. Just kinda looking at that and throwing the pond in the back and I thought that might work pretty well. Now. There might be some things that are missing on that, but that's kinda where it starts and that's kinda how we work. We are not gonna throw a a previous liquor store design, site design or building design at you guys. Everything is unique, your situation's unique, your site's unique, and your project triangle is unique and. We want you to understand that it's not our goal to shove anything down your throat. It's our goal to save you a ton of money. To explore all the options and be there for you so that we can brag about your project as to how we, we designed on a dime. My wife likes that show. Designed on a dime and helped you through the process, okay? I'd be happy to address any questions if you have.
Thank you, Corey. Um one thing I would like Mayor and Council to know is that when we first started having discussions with Corey and his team. It was to get the most cost effective design build as well as meeting a very tight timeline, so that is why those options. He had asked myself and staff that we had in our meeting if it would, if precast would be acceptable, which I said yes, cause this was really early on. And at that time, we had not known about the difficulties with the flat roof. So I just wanted to share that again. Um now, if there's any questions from Council, otherwise we'll go into how much per square foot on the different options, if you have any counsel or questions for Corey.
I I I I do have a question. Um. Uh precast to like a wood or steel structure far as walls go, um. With with pitched roof on either. What is the, I guess, what are we looking at for efficiency far as keeping it cool in summer, keeping it warm in the winter? What are the differences?
Uh precast is, from a wall perspective, is pretty hard to beat. Um the the systems are highly uh energy efficient. Um they, a lot of them will have plastic ties that that bond the exterior skin to the interior structural. Uh wife uh on the precast, precast buildings, I mean, in general, if you were to ask me what ru- what would we roughly need to budget? Per year for air conditioning and and heating of a precast structure. I would say that the utilities, including lighting, gas and heat, is right around a dollar a square foot. Uh for annual budget. And and that's, and that's not for every building type, but it's a, it's a general rule of thumb. It's actually pretty close. We monitor a lot of our buildings. Uh because we get asked that question a lot, but they're highly efficient. Um the roof system, so if we were to switch out uh to a metal, uh say a steel truss, so you guys have seen, you've seen uh wood. Uh framed buildings, houses, for example, with with uh with wood trusses that are, you know, triangular shaped, right? They can do those same trusses with steel, uh C channels, okay? So you can do that. You can even do composite trusses that are, that are both steel and wood. It gets a little com- complex. But the cost benefit for those would certainly be evaluated. Um the roof or the insulation for that. Can be done one of two ways. You can put the roof uh insulation directly under the roofing system. So say we're gonna use a standing seam metal roof. You can put the insulation directly under that, yet on top of the decking material. And then um have your uh. Uh trusses, if you will, exposed to view on the inside and then run your ductwork. Inside those truss areas because it's atmospherically open to the interior. Another option is to do it like a house where you have a bottom cord and you put sheet rock or some s- some structure, maybe a metal liner panel. On the bottom cord, just like you have on your home, and then you blow insulation in. Both situations will. Will provide you with very similar performance on the uh R values of the roof, cause you can blow in quite a bit of. Insulation, but you can also put a lot more on there. It might come down to a cost if you don't care about the aesthetics on the inside of the building or that volume. Okay, um so just a number of things to consider. I think it was mentioned earlier, you know, you could put a air handling unit outside, fence it in. Run the ductwork in the side, uh and then shoot that ductwork straight across. Yes, you can certainly do that. It's not the cheapest thing to do, but it does certainly work, right? Did I answer the question okay?
Yes, thank you.
You're so welcome.
Corey, I think that um Council would also probably appreciate knowing, and when you look at your um proposals, the. Two, the one that has steel and the one that has wood does not meet that Thanksgiving timeline is. Do you think that that really is not possible? I mean, you, I would assume you gave us your best um case scenario, but it looks like the, that is not an option. Is that correct?
Yeah, you know, it's really gonna be tough to, okay. So as I mentioned earlier, um just looking at precast as an example, when that product is procured and ordered. It starts under fabrication in a heated shop in a location, actually like uh seventy-five miles from you is a, is um. Yeah, but what's his name? Albany, Albany, Min- Minnesota, and that happens to be a very. A big plant for Wells Precast, so you're not very far away from them. So trucking costs would be, would be minimal. Um and so you get a bang for your buck. Here's where I'm going with it. When you, when you work with modular construction and you build that offsite. That can occur despite the fact that we got nasty weather out here. That product can be ready to install when the foundations and the site work is all done. That building can get totally enclosed and ready for interior work, whether it's plumbers digging their, their, sorry about that. Plumbers digging their their pipes in the ground or or anything along that line, that can all occur. Uh at at, at the, at that point when the building is is erected and water, when that water, yeah, watertight for the most part. But heated, you can start pouring the heat to it, then people can work inside. So you do that, you do that. That gets you a month advantage, at least a month advantage, if not a month and a half advantage. Compared to going to traditional wood frame and steel structures. Classic example, unless you're gonna pay for winter heat and start it right away, which nobody wants to pay for that, cause nobody knows what that's gonna cost, right?
Well, it's a lot.
It's a lot.
It would add a lot.
So, so.
That's, that's a good answer, Corey. I'll, I'll cut you off. That's good. We'll see if Council has any more question, any questions.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other council members have questions?
I mean, I'm just trying to kinda get a, a actual hard number on what the cost to to these guys is gonna be and compare. Compare them accurately. So for Brunton, I s- I see you've got kind of a superintendent. You know, budgeted in here to manage the project and of course it gets, you know, more expensive as you have more to manage, but. It's seventy to eighty thousand or so it looks like. Um and then you've got the ten percent of the um for the, or the, excuse me, it's six point seven five percent for the design fee.
So I think that, looking at the overall, if you're looking at the cost to compare. Uh would be that design fee is there in their architect fee as a whole, so.
And and then when, as I'm looking at at, is it White Seth? Is that how you say it?
With Seth?
With Seth. Um you know, you've got design and development, you've got construction documents, and then you've got bidding and construction. You know, on there, I mean, is that, is there a superintendent that will be kind of in that hourly rate and? And then I noticed you have ten percent on all the subcontractors for for one of the uh costs as well. So I mean, when we say subcontractors, are we talking everybody that's doing plumbing, electrical, etc. Yeah, right, so.
Bid in a nutshell, he's giving you a, he's giving you a projected cost. Realistically.
Realistically, this, this is going out to bid to gen- general contractors.
Right.
So what they're doing is they're giving you a bid line that's saying that this is what they're figuring it that's gonna cost. You know, general contractor's fee, plumbing bid, kind of that's, it's, it, it's a book, you look at it, this is what it's costing. And that doesn't, and it doesn't necessarily mean that's the case. My point being is. What's with, with Seth's gonna charge us to do this project? What Bronson gonna charge us to do this project? That's what I wanna see. I wanna see a nutshell.
Yeah.
Because I'm gonna tell you something, you can project all those numbers all day long you want, it ain't gonna happen. It it's gonna be, you're, this, this guy's gonna come in ten thousand dollars under this guy, this guy's gonna be thirty thousand dollars over this guy. That's how the bidding process works. In the nutshell. What I wanna see right at this moment is I wanna see what's Wood Seth gonna charge to do this project.
What's Brunton gonna charge?
And what's Burton gonna charge us. That's, that's the bottom line. This, this is what we need to decide right now.
Yeah, right.
We can, the rest of these numbers are gonna come after the fact. And when, when he says doing plumbing and heating, this job is gonna start in the spring. I just got done doing four buildings down in Lakeville. That I spent three weeks in doing underground, out in the hot sun, no, ain't no building. It's a slab on grade building. I just got done roughing in a house in Zimmerman, November twenty-ninth. They didn't have any blankets down. I dug in the sand. It all depends on the weather. I mean, it's, it, that, that's all gonna determine that. So.
Yep.
It, and talking about heating the building right now, we don't, we're not, unless we're digging up frost, we're not heating the building. And we're not gonna pay the frost carrying up fees. There's gonna be a hell of a charge to dig this building with frost.
So I think it would be really important to find out potentially from Mike is what is, so we could compare apples to apples. I think the only piece missing. From the Wood Seth proposal is what would that not to exceed amount be for that bid construction portion of it? We generally, we had spoken, you said on average maybe thirty thousand, but what do you think it would be not to exceed and then we just all add them together?
Yeah, not to exceed would be thirty thousand.
Okay. Okay, so if that was the not to exceed and he revised his proposal, say just that, you're looking at a total cost and I'm gonna round the numbers just for simplicity. Is a hundred and forty thousand on the Wood Seth proposal. On the proposals from Brunton, uh we have the, I'm gonna give all three, so the br- the precast option. Would be a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. The. The wood option would be a hundred and seventy thousand and the steel option be a hundred and seventy-four thousand.
What was the other one, Miss Wood? Not this one seventy?
The steel is one seventy-four, the wood was one seventy. The precast is one fifty-eight.
So that's superintendent money then from the Brunton one, I mean, is that?
That's just a figure, that, he's giving you a bottom dollar.
Yep.
Of of two point six million dollars. And that's what our projected cost would be with hiring a general contractor. And then his fees in there and it's, it's broken down that way.
Okay, so he's including the general contractor in that.
But basically what, yeah, what he's doing on that two point six million dollars.
Right.
So but, you know, realistically, Wood Seth is a hundred and forty thousand. And then the other three options are Brunton's.
Okay.
Yeah, but but remember that that was all based upon a cost estimate. Of what we assumed the project would cost based upon a whole boatload of assumptions, right? So we just talked about that. You just, you've, you've alluded to the fact that you're not interested in a, in a low slope roof and that you want a metal truss. Configuration with a standing seam metal roof and the mechanical system is no longer RTU, it's gotta go down on the ground to an air handling unit. I think, I think what's, I, I think the problem here is that originally this was sent out as a litmus test. Hey, what should we budget? And we kept helping and we kept helping and now we sit here with. And and Mike's probably sitting there cringing too. We sit here with our uh our insides exposed as to what we were assuming. Were some of the things that you wanted without having any guidance to do it. I think the problem, I mean, you know. I think the problem here is that, is that we've put together cost estimates. Based upon a lot of assumptions with no guidance that drive the construction cost, thus driving the fee.
Did, did we not give them the same information that we gave when?
No, I will say, Mayor and Council, that um Brunton was given different information because after we had brought Brunton's. So staff as a team, it was pretty much everybody on that table and John, all met with Brunton. And we gave them that we wanted, all the design pictures were the same that we sent to Wood Seth. But we said we wanted the most cost effective, efficient. I hate to word the use cheap, that's, that sounds terrible when you're looking at this capacity of a facility, but the cheapest option that we can get this built. In a, in a way not to lose any revenue at a liquor store and to gain what we could potentially have for ours. So in the beginning, they were given different information, like the precast. Um I didn't, we didn't know, staff didn't know that, we wouldn't want flat roof at that time. So when their proposal came, it was d- under different notions than what. Actually, you know, Wood Seth got to hear because we had kinda gone through motions of, well, we don't want those things, like, oh, you know.
Correct, but now we've also. Correct, but now we've also, now we've turned a corner and realized that, and that's why we went back to Brunton saying, hey, here's the correct things, the things that we did want, and now we have given it to them, and this gentleman's still sitting here saying that we haven't given him the proper stuff, and
Well, I think he's just saying that they're, and, and Mike has to do with Woodseth as well. You have to make assumptions on construction costs in general. That's why they have a range. We asked
In all fairness, I mean, if Mi- if Michael is wrong with his construction costs, and, and if he were to have given you the proposal in that fashion where it was a percentage of construction cost and he was wrong with it, if he's wrong, his fee would be higher and could be easily higher than ours. Um, if he's wrong, and we think based upon our cost estimates, but there's a lot of assumptions that he could be wrong. He may not be wrong. Depends on how simple that building looks. It depends on what, I don't wanna call it lipstick, 'cause that diminishes what we do, right, Mike? But, uh, you know, it depends on what you want. You know, you guys pointed out to us that you want a barrel-vaulted, um, entrance system, that that was really important to you. Okay? Well, we have an estimate for what that is gonna involve in our building designs that Mike probably doesn't have. And there's a lot of involvement when it comes to a barrel-vaulted roof and structure on the corner of a building to make it look right. None of us showed you what it would look like. I'm not trying to complain, I'm just simply saying that this, this is, um, this is really unique. And I think what might work best for all parties is now that we have a, a better understanding of what you're after, I think maybe Mike should be allowed to give a straight fee proposal with a, with, based upon what you, which you're, you're talking about here, and we would do the same thing and send it to the city, um, you know, in a formal proposal, maybe it's just a letter, because you, we don't, we don't have to brag about who we are. We just send a fee letter and what it includes, and send that to you guys for review, and then I'll let you make the decision based on that.
And, and I, he, here's where I'm just gonna stop this, because I think Mike could go forever, I think he could go forever, and I think we'd be, we'd be here at ten o'clock at night. And, and I'm just gonna be honest with everybody in this room, John's opinion is what matters to me. So
Yeah.
what I'd like to do is excuse both of these gentlemen, and then I'd like to talk to my liquor store manager. 'Cause that's gonna be what's important to this council.
You can ask for a recess.
If, if I could get a recess, that'd be great, 'cause I'd like to talk to my liquor store manager, without either of you present.
So it takes a motion and a second.
I need a motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundin to take a recess and a second from Councilman Gordon. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And state your name too. Sorry, Miss, Councilman Collison and Burgley.
Dan Collison, aye.
Burgley's not on.
Oh, Burgley disappeared. Okay, well, it passes four to zero.
Uh, thank you. We'll take a five-minute recess.
Okay, I do, okay, okay.
I'm gonna set my timer just so we don't
Do I need to record this still?
No. We have to pause recording.
So I don't, I don't mind if this audience sits here, to be honest with you. All I need is, John, I need you to come up here and talk to this council, because I care what you're gonna